Three minutes late, but we'll get started. Roll call?
Mr. Cameron.
Present.
Mr. Bowman.
Here.
Mr. Collier.
Here.
Mr. Beadle.
Here.
Mr. Pienen.
Here.
Mr. Blau.
All right. Could you stand for the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
All right. Entertained a motion for the meeting, the minutes of the last meeting.
Make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Cameron.
Aye.
Mr. Bowman.
Aye.
Mr. Collier.
Aye.
Mr. Beadle.
Aye.
Mr. Pienen. Mr. Blau.
All right. The first thing, under visitors and communications, we have an ABC hearing. Joe, if you want to go through that, please.
Certainly, certainly. The city of Fort Thomas has received application from Dave and Matt Incorporated, doing business as The Midway Cafe at 10-17 South Fort Thomas Avenue for a quota retail package license. That application has been on file in my office since the previous council meeting. So I'd like to open up a public hearing to hear any public comment on that application. You can open it as of 7:05 PM. So is there any public comment? Anybody who would like to make comment on this application? All right. I'm going to say that's a no. So let the record show that there was no public comment on this pending application. That means that it is officially approved or will be approved by me, the ABC administrator, tomorrow morning when I get to work, and local approval will be sent to the state of Kentucky. So let's officially close the public hearing.
All right. The next item, under visitors' communication, I have a proclamation, and this is a fun one. It's about bicyclists. So proclamation, whereas the bicycle is an economical, healthful, convenient, and environmentally sound form of transportation and an excellent tool for recreation enjoyment of Fort Thomas' scenic beauty, and whereas throughout the month of May, the residents of Fort Thomas and its visitors will experience the joys of bicycling through educational programs, bike tune-ups, slow rides, commuting events, fitness awareness events, or by simply getting out and going for a ride. And whereas Fort Thomas' road and trail system attracts bikelists, bikes, the people that ride bicycles each year providing economic health, transportation, and scenic benefits. And whereas creating a bicycle-friendly community has been shown to improve citizens' health, well-being, and quality of life, improving traffic safety, and supporting student learning outcomes. Whereas the League of American Bicyclists, many neighboring cities, local bicycle organizations, schools, parks, and recreation departments, police departments, public health districts, hospitals, companies, and civic groups will be promoting bicycling during the month of May 2019. And whereas the city of Fort Thomas wants to promote greater public awareness of bicycle operation and safety education in an effort to reduce collisions and injuries and improve health and safety for everyone on our streets. Now therefore, I, Eric Hosse, Mayor of the city of Fort Thomas, Kentucky, do hereby proclaim May 2019 as Bike Month in Fort Thomas, Kentucky, and I urge all residents to join me in a special observance, given under my hand this day, the 15th day of April in the year of our Lord 2019. Yay for bicycles. I love bicycles. Okay. So the proclamation over. The floor is open if anybody wants to address council on any issues. If you do, come, state your name and address for the record and tell us.
Mother of the 2000s.
Yeah. No, you'll tell the truth. We know.
I'm Steve Gillis. I live at 66 Sweet Rider. Thanks for the opportunity to talk to you, man. I wanted to talk about something I've never really experienced. It first, I started thinking about it on Fort Thomas Avenue in January. There's an article in there about crosswalk safety. I'm an avid watcher along with hundreds, not thousands of people. I've almost been hit, probably three or four times, by people rolling through stop signs. And I'd like to encourage you, you could please, at least look at how to stop that. Even just the past week in Sweet Rider, wasn't present, but my wife saw them. You know, I'm very familiar with what they do. They're looking this way because I'm rolling to the right. And there's a child there, and at the last minute, he sees me. I'm sorry, we're going to hit somebody. When I first moved here twenty and a half years ago, I was told after I was stopped by the police, they forced 25 mile an hour speed on the street. And you're right, the police was nice enough to hang you down because I was afraid of you. I learned later and I was like, you know, most people see it. I like to think if there's some way we could put a campaign out where people will really say, let's start the stop signs. Some things may get hurt. And you know, I'm smart enough or wise enough, maybe not smart, but I do walk defensively because I know people are doing that. There's a lot of kids out there who don't. A lot of people that might be zoned out, whatever, should think about something. I saw in South Gate near my bed, a sign, I thought, of course, probably knew it after a while, but it was a right stop sign, very nice, printed sign. I looked at that picture. That says, "It's your choice. Full stop free, rolling stop 106 for dollars."
Nice.
And I know, I was on grain dirt last year, and I learned there's a lot more going on in this town than I realized. I know you're busy. You probably love to get fish fries and stuff and that. But I really would like to at least think about it. And if you want to start, and I'm sure, I don't believe this, tickets are going to have to be given, and then the worst starts spreading if people are serious. Go down 5:30, 6:00 in the morning at the bottom of South Gate in Waterworks, and people rolling their own ground, running right into the work, barely slowing down. I just wanted to put that on your radar if it's not already. I think it's important. I know there's a lot of fish fries. Someone's going to get hurt. That article said around $6,000 per year. I would not even get there. I don't want to be, but I know people don't mean it, it's just careless. And when you think it hurts, so just put that on your radar.
I think that's great. You know, we've been doing a lot with the crosswalk safety lately, too. We can add that, too, because it's all the same thing. You know, people are not paying attention to crosswalks. I crossed the street the other day, and one car stopped and the second car didn't. You know, it's one of those things where you do, you have to walk defensively until we get enough people to understand how to deal with crosswalks, to stop at the stop signs. And yes, I'm always looking at the person in the car because if they're looking to turn and they're not seeing me, I'm hanging back. And there are times when I come up to a person and I tell them to go on, and they say, no, they want the car to go through because they want to stay safe. And I think it's great. I think we can add it to it. Maybe we can get that. Bet you can write a story about it, couldn't you? Awesome. That's great.
Well, thank you. Thanks for talking.
Thank you.
I mean, I think mentioning a campaign is good and good because I think for a lot of people, it's just, you're interested in someone apologizing to realize you as well. I think it is awareness. I mean, I think if people real, you know, really understand how dangerous these things can be, I mean, those are, I mean, the two probably worst things that happened since the time I've been on this campus is two pedestrians being killed. And pretty boring. But I do think there's awareness aspect to it. I certainly am aware of some of it. Now I learned about how these, you know, incidents occur. So I don't know what we can do to increase awareness, but really, I'm thinking.
I'll just, chief, if you want to comment, but we've had a lot of internal conversation on the topic, and it's always good for a community to refresh that once in a while because, not unlike the sign you referenced, people start to take it for granted, and it becomes less of a heightened issue in the community. We've spent a lot of time recently with the crosswalks, as the mayor alluded to. We've had conversations, I know the chief and I together, about those signs in particular and the potential for placing some of them. And you're right, at some point, they just become kind of part of the background, but they are effective when they're initially in place, and we talked about the potential to do that. Not sure if you're aware, we also have commissioned one of our police officers to be a traffic control officer. So we do have the opportunity to do a little more targeted type of enforcement. And so if we so choose, not unlike the speeding issues that we hear, if there are particular areas where stop signs are being ignored, those could potentially be targeted for enforcement.
Great. Thank you. Anyone else like to address council?
I'm Nina Prentle, Bonnie Lang, Fort Thomas. But to piggyback on what he had to say, I was at my son's, who is on Ledwin, and it was already dark when I left their house, and I was heading back toward my area. And that, I always call it the big bend nearby, Big Whack and all that stuff, big bend, and that first sidewalk, every curve of the bend is very dark in there anyway. And I'm always really watching extra for someone crossing there. There's usually a lady that walks two dogs, and she'll cross the street right there. Well, I noticed the last time, there was a red car parked. I mean, the front end, it was almost on the line of the crosswalk. And so heading south, right-hand side, a car parked, and it was leading up to those local family homes right there. So I think, kind of piggyback on, reiterate, the parking near these crosswalks, maybe that particular spot might need to be marked back a little bit or something because it is so dark there, and it is hard to see people crossing at night time.
Okay.
And since I was on that committee, I'm extra cautious about the crosswalks anyway.
Sure, sure. Great. Thank you very much. Anyone else like to address council? Oh, go right in.
I have a letter. Dear Mayor Hosse, hello. We have a complaint. We would like, we'd like to walk from Washington Avenue and Custis Avenue up to the Baptist Church on Highland Avenue to bike ride. We have to wait a while to cross Highland Avenue because cars continuously are going up and down the hill and not letting people cross. We want to add a crosswalk and traffic lights so it's easier to walk to the church. This could also be beneficial for people walking to the library. Could you help us with this problem? Sincerely, Caroline Egan, 4th grader, Ruth Moyer, and Maya, I'm going to butcher this, Lipniscus, 3rd grader, from Ruth Moyer.
So they're talking like partway down the hill by the library. Is it possible to put a crosswalk in someplace there or not? Maybe at the intersection where, what is that, Washington?
Washington would be the intersection. It's not an ideal location. I mean, we could certainly study the potential. First of all, I think the traffic light issue is probably not, not going to be warranted. Regarding a crosswalk, the only difficulty is when it's not intersecting streets, it's more of a mid-block crossing with the grade that you have on Highland Avenue. We need to be a little bit careful about not creating an expectation of safety when drivers are not going to acknowledge or recognize the crosswalk itself. I mean, typically, even though sometimes it's inconvenient, the crosswalks are located at crossings where there's intersecting streets. In that case, you know, that would be pretty far to go east to Highland Avenue, but the alternative would be to go to the bottom of Highland and cross at the street light that's existing at US 27. I mean, placing it there doesn't necessarily create a safe environment. We could, we would have to look at that, the traffic counts and, you know, what site distances are available, which probably are pretty good, but we may have to take parking back on either side of it and really look at the method of creating a crosswalk. We could have our engineer look at that.
Okay. And I assume they live over off of Washington someplace, and they want to go across, is that what they're saying?
Yeah. Like the walk from Washington to the other.
So they just ride their bikes in the Baptist jerk parking lot?
So they want to get straight across.
Okay. All right. Okay, well, that may be the flag.
All right. I mean, another, another alternative to not necessarily Washington, although it's not necessarily any safer, would be to create it at the intersecting point closer to the public library.
Up there.
Where the entrance is, yes. So that would be another alternative we could look at.
Okay.
Similar type of issues and problems.
Sure, it is. Okay. All right. Moving along to reports of officers. Fire department monthly report.
Thank you, Mayor Hosse. This is board council. I really don't have anything to add to the March nothing report that you see those units. Always glad to feel it in person, July, even on the fire department.
Any questions for the chief? I'll entertain a motion.
Move to receive and file.
Is there a second?
Right.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Cameron.
Aye.
Mr. Bowman.
Aye.
Mr. Collier.
Aye.
Mr. Beadle.
Aye.
Mr. Pienen.
Aye.
Mr. Blau.
All right. Police department method report.
Mayor, I'll just hit a couple of highlights real quick. At the end of the month, we hired Brad Rickenbach. He came to us on layer KSP and University of Kentucky Police. He has about five, five and a half years of experience. Doing great so far. He's in training with Sergeant Nathan Day, a very good department. Been long with Evermore, and he's a great deputy director of community as well, so glad to have him. Secondly, Detective Derek Bott put together an article about the current state of scams going around. A lot of those are internet scams, email scams, and phone scams. He was able to push that article out on our city webpage, I think on our city Facebook page, and also Fort Thomas Matters brand. So if anyone who has had a chance to read that or passed along to your friends, it's out there. Put a lot of good information in it, some do's and don'ts, and how to avoid those scams. Third, in our report here, I wanted to highlight that Officer Zach Rauler, making Johnson in Fort Thomas Independent Schools, put together a pedestrian safety video revolving mostly around crosswalks and other types of pedestrian safety around town. That video also featured our very own Mr. Dill, Cam Dill, very nice. And that video is also available on our website in Fort Thomas. Lastly, we had a very Johnson school has moved locations. And that's right when we came back to the group break on April 8th, and the fire departments come down there doing a lot of fire drills and making sure the police are number. We've been trying to keep an eye on traffic the best we can the first few days, pulled the pole haul last week. And I think the difference between Monday and Tuesday was a significant increase in a little bit better flow down there for all students still there. Oregon afternoon, the TMB is keeping up, having school buses operating on that highway pedestrian as well. That's something that's been on our radar all last week. With that, if you have any questions, I'll march on.
I'd like to add that being a Johnson parent, in the first couple of days of the bus was very stressful for a lot of parents. With the police department, they had a tail, the buses had a tail for the first couple of days. And it really did ease the minds of a lot of the parents just to make sure that some of those people that don't really maintain school buses didn't go around. School buses, when the stop signs are out, so I appreciate you guys doing that. It went a long way for the parents.
Yeah, I heard a lot of positive comments about all of it. The entire planning of the process, how everything worked out, and everybody working together to minimize all the stress. So great job. Entertained a motion.
Chief Coogler, just want to actually small comment. Based on the discussion on pedestrian safety, I think it's important to note that we have written a lot more tickets this month, 2019 compared to 2018. So can you count on some of those initiatives?
I can. There's two things that drive, when you say change, there's two things that drive. One is, as you talked about, we have the traffic officer position, and right now we're rotating that amongst several officers to keep it up to the fresh. Just ask one person as well, and do that job day after day, month after month. At some point, you're going to get tired of your tickets. So if we're doing it on a one-month basis and rotating, you should have enough people to donate the officers. The last month, it was Joe Palucci, one of our younger officers, he wrote a lot of, he writes a lot of tickets anyway. Very integrated, putting in the role of traffic officer. Took it very serious. So the other thing that drives an increase in fees would be our grants cycles. There are three main, three main grants that get you DUI, speeding, and T-12. And those, some are six months, some are three months, for a long kind of different cycles. But when one of those grants becomes available, the officers start working, three-hour blocks, four-hour blocks. They expect to see some type of enforcement activity when they're giving us the money to get out of. So those two things have to be seen.
That's helpful. Thank you. I think the note, so 73 last month for speeding, and in 2018, the number was 12, so that's a pretty significant increase. So hopefully people are paying attention and slowing down. But thanks, chief.
Great. Any other question? Okay. Entertained a motion.
Move to receive and file.
Is there a second?
Right.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Cameron.
Aye.
Mr. Bowman.
Aye.
Mr. Collier.
Aye.
Mr. Beadle.
Aye.
Mr. Pienen.
Aye.
All right. City administrators' report.
Okay, I have a couple of items just to update, really. We had some mention of the pedestrian safety initiative over spring break. We were able to make the installation in front of Highlands High School with the rapidly flashing beacon, so that is in place. And I've stated this before, but it's our intention to get the Highlands Middle School and the St. Thomas when we have the availability of not fighting the traffic around those schools. So those will be installed after school lets out in May. A couple of other items, we had a recent meeting. We met with the highway department and with the city of South Gate. You may have seen all the orange barrels that are lying the side of US 27 at the interchange with I-471, and I think we all know what that means. They're getting ready to disrupt that area. They'll actually be rebuilding the concrete portion of 27. It was resurfaced recently, but the area basically from the intersection near Muck Road over to the other side of the interchange is a concrete surface. They'll be tearing that out and replacing it. As part of that effort, we're working with Kentucky Department of Transportation with the city of South Gate, and they are in agreement to do some improvements. They'll be replacing the curb in the medians to actually place grass and then work the cities collectively to put some type of landscaping in the larger areas of those medians, similar to what was done on Grand Avenue a few years ago. So that's the intention. So hopefully those improvements will be, will be a part of that project. They've indicated that shouldn't be an issue. South Gate is taking on the majority of the burden of watering and maintaining them. There are a couple of triangular pieces that are on the interchange in Fort Thomas, and we'll work with them to maintain them as well. So we think those will be great improvements down there. On Memorial Parkway, we also had a meeting with the highway department on the issue of the icing that's been occurring near the overlooked apartments. We met with the developer and their engineers and their contractor and the highway department with our staff that observes that. Of course, that's a state route. We put in a formal request with them, again, to look at what issues are causing that condition. They've indicated that they'll be reviewing the plans that they approved for the development to determine whether there's full compliance with what they've done. Our staff was able to indicate to them that there was an issue that we were aware of, and apparently they were not, that one of the crossover pieces of pipe that carries water from the east side to the west side was blocked on the west side on the property owned by Carlisle. So they made contact with Carlisle, and it's my understanding, and I did see the equipment there, that they opened that up, and it was backing water up and causing it to stay on the east side of the street. It's not a total, you know, condition that creates that overall icing, but it is a contributing factor. So that's been mitigated. So we'll be continuing conversation with them. Obviously, we hope, although last night was close, to not have freezing conditions again, but it's, everybody left the meeting with the idea that this would be reviewed and a solution created and implemented immediately, way before we get into a condition where we have to be concerned about icing. I will say this, the developer was present, they brought all their people with them, they're willing to do any aspect that required on their property. So we're really waiting for the lead from the Department of Highways as to exactly what issues might need to be addressed. And of course, the city's willing to do anything that we can contribute to mitigate that. So I know it's been brought up multiple times, and I don't know if anybody had any other questions, but we'll be following that issue.
We have a question. We have, obviously, it's, you know, it's a somewhat less, I've been thinking about that for a long time, but you got to do this. It's a great, it's a great year on every, you know. At what point, though, we can be, we don't hear back at certain point, we want to address this, but when, when do we as a city go ahead and take it upon ourselves and do some kind of evaluation of that area so that we can find out exactly what the cause is, so then we can pinpoint the cause. It's a pretty minor cause to the city that affects all the citizens who are racing there. So we can pinpoint the cause, and then we can focus on that particular person, whether it's us, the sidewalks, or if it's the developer, or if it's the state. So at some point, I think we should consider doing our own evaluation so that we're not dancing around all these people and everybody's trying to, probably if it was me, I probably have some luck a little bit here and there. I think we should really consider at some point very soon if we don't have an answer to, a little bit more aggressive.
Well, we called the meeting, and we insisted that all those people attend.
Sure.
So it does affect our residents, and that is the approach that we're taking. And we'll continue to have that approach, but it is outside our jurisdiction in terms of the right of way. We will be working with the representatives from the highway department to, really, it's their issue to determine exactly what can and cannot be done within the right of way to mitigate the issue. And so it's really not our responsibility, and quite frankly, for us to perform any type of work without their authorization, then we accept the liability and responsibility.
I'm not saying we do work, I'm just saying, hit with the problem.
I understand.
Because the cause is, whoever it is, the problem is ultimately responsible for your accident. So is that correct?
Correct.
So we figure out if it's causal or not, and we can address the person in particular, and then we know that we're, in a more aggressive manner, I'm not saying we need to do it at this point, but at certain point before the winter calls, we're just getting, if they're playing a dance, we're dancing.
Right.
You know, I'm just concerned because if it hits worse, it seems like, you know, we've had an excessive amount of water call in the last couple of years, I understand that, but you know, erosion, it creates changes, water damage. It's focusing on one area. We have leak freezes here, nobody's expecting them.
Right.
It's hard to address because you're not expecting that. It's the city's, it's coming up here. It's just a concern, right?
Sure.
And I know where you're at. I want to know that, that's my thought, I have to.
I can keep it in as an item for discussion with this council, certainly to keep you informed of where we think we are on a month-to-month basis, but we'll be pursuing it with the representatives in anticipation that there'll be a plan. And that's really where we left the meeting was, we would like to see a plan developed as to exactly what would mitigate the issue, and then assigning it to whichever parties are responsible for it. And that's really the way that we're going with it, so.
Was KDOT intent to bring in a hydro engineer, do you know, to formulate a plan?
I think their first attempt is to go back and review the approval drawings for the development and first see what issues were maybe within the development itself that contributed to it. Review their permits that they issued to that developer for the turn lane and their entry point and so forth.
Drainage.
Yeah, the drainage, obviously. And then the second thing would be what options are available within the right of way in the absence of any responsibility coming from outside the right of way. So I don't know who they'll engage in their process. I don't know that it's as technical as a hydrology study as much as it's surface drainage. So I think that's where the beginning point is for them.
So do we not have control then? What the group does is we can't make a resolution or pray someone, or do this. It's not our road, but the cost, we can have the right to address citizens.
Well, I mean, I think if this council wanted to vote to, I mean, you can make a resolution to notify the respective agencies that have jurisdiction authority, but if you're looking at, you know, committing a resource to do a study, I think, you know, then we're assuming that, you know, we're taking action on a property that we're not responsible for. I mean, it's possible we could do that.
As a question, I'm just concerned sometime. Unfortunately for me, I'm new, so I'll ask a lot of questions.
Hey, nothing wrong with that. Sure. So I, again, I think we'll keep this as a topic, and we certainly have felt the issue in terms of feedback in the community. We've had continuing conversation, I mean, I can note the times that we've dealt with this issue with their maintenance department and their managing people. But this time, we got them all in the same place at the same time, and we'll continue to pursue them that way. The next item I had, just an update on Alexander Circle in Tower Park, if you've been by there. They are finishing up their sanitary sewer installation. When they are completed, which is scheduled within the next week or so, the water district will be finishing the water main, and then Duke Energy and the other utilities will be placing utility underground. It will also allow us to finish the roadway improvement at the left field bend in the road, and we'll be doing the intersection out where Alexander Circle will hit Cochran near the vessel. So we're currently getting bids for doing that work. That would be the grading that would facilitate the additional parking that we've indicated that will be installed around the vessel. So those are items that are all in play. Pardon the pun, but they're still playing baseball and softball on the field. So we're trying to minimize the disruption, and we're working very closely with the developer, and they've been great to work with. So I think we're massaging our park use with the activity that, the construction that's necessary there. So everybody bear with us on that part of it, but I think we'll do fine. There was mention of Johnson Elementary, and I'll just add, great job by the school district, great job by our safety departments. I know both of our safety departments have been in real close contact, and I'm glad to hear how well it's all, the transition has gone as expected. I did meet with the contractor for Johnson Elementary for the demolition and reconstruction. We will be setting a time to meet with residents in that area and meet out in the field with them, with representatives from the contractor, and just talking about parking and delivery and site conditions, because there'll be some temporary disruption in and around the school that's beyond even when the school was functioning with all the activity of students being there and teachers being there. It'll be different, it'll be disruptive in a sense, but most of it's temporary, but we're going to call them together with an opportunity to kind of share what parts of that. For example, they will be closing the sidewalk in front of the site. So we'll be looking at temporary crosswalks immediately prior to that closure. So the one at Hartway will be maintained, but we'll probably have to establish one at Dixie. So if you're on the east side of Norfolk Thomas and you're entering toward the Johnson site, you'll have to cross the street because there won't be no public sidewalk during that part of the construction. So those are some of the issues that'll be shared with residents in that proximity. And hopefully, we'll make them aware of all the potential conditions that they might experience. I didn't have anything else unless anybody had any questions. That's all I have to report.
Awesome, thank you. Move ahead to unfinished business, the business incentive, the GROW program. I think we made some minor changes to that last time.
We made a few more changes, and we hope we have about two more, three more words. We still need to be, I want to thank all of you for your help. The Renaissance Board has worked on this for nearly a year, and I am grateful for everyone's help. I think it's going to be a great program for businesses that's needed. If you'll remember back to 2006 and the difference the supply rate made to the businesses that participated back then, I think this is going to be equally effective for business districts. This will be even better because it's pointing for all of the businesses, and it will just be the same district that was back then. So as you know, we have a growing, up to $10,000, and we grow a lot, which is between 20,000 dollars, 25,000 dollars, or 25% matching grants. It's for commercial and mixed-use properties. You've seen this a few times now, I guess. We're hoping that this will make a big difference because we do, we may be quiet, we're hoping it'll be energy efficient, we're hoping it'll make them free. And it will be a big expense of self-help. So I hope that you like the changes we've made. There's still a couple of things, lots of things. Mr. Ives really had a piece that was really good, and I was under financial impact, there were two sentences to fix that I will get fixed with the high due type of stuff, and we related that, and I think everybody.
Yeah, I do have one, you know, sort of basic question. It says that grant funding will be discussed only after the work is completed, and obviously administratively, it makes it a lot easier if you know, you don't have to worry about already actually doing this improvement. You've talked to people, so I mean, it could be an issue of somebody actually being able to get the money together to do the improvement and then be reimbursed with the grant. Do you think that affects the participation at all?
We can discuss that if they, the problem we had the last was people not paying us, and people hope to be back to us about that. And I am so concerned the city caught a little of that again. And we can discuss how you want to handle that, because I don't want the city to get caught in the middle of another issue like that. So that's why we put it in there. We want the bills to get paid, so we wanted them to get the job done, bring us the receipts and get that. I understand what you're saying. Do you think of a better way to make this work?
I mean, it may not be a problem. The applicants aren't, you know, it's really not going to be an issue, but, you know, I mean.
I understand.
Yeah, it depends on how big the project is, too. I mean, like with housing, progress, things is, this one's progressive, and you have to go out and make sure that they're actually doing, you know, that much progress has been made, that you can give them money. I realize it's a bit scary, so just, just.
I have a little experience, I mean, we've got, something I'm involved in is using state funding, that we're getting, basically any contractors, any contractors that we're using, we've explained to them that the state is funding a large portion of this contract, and are you okay to wait two to three weeks after we submit to get that portion? So well, you know, you go ahead and pay your portion. A lot of times contractors are willing to just sit on the sidelines if they know if they have an approved implication, and it's coming from a government entity, they're going to get paid. So, you know, you might have contractors that are willing to.
Is it the fact that you're paying the contractor directly, or you, would you just get the grant?
Well, and we don't pay. I mean, in this case that I'm familiar with, with state money in Ohio, they reimburse us, and then we have already, and then we pay the contractor, yeah. So, and that seems to work with everybody that we've gotten bids from, that they're willing, as long as they know there's a government entity that's signed off on an approval.
Yeah, and if they have to.
Credit card, but that's when you get the credit card.
And if they have to, they have to submit copies of contracts with contractors on what this is going to cost. Then they could submit the paid bill in order to get reimbursed, so you don't ruin that situation again. They say it's over, it's done, look, it looks great, here, give me my money. It's like, well, show us the paid bills and the reimbursement.
And then keep copies of those pages.
Maybe it's a phrase in there that says, and final inspection. Maybe just after the work is completed.
Which page is that? Says at the top.
It's five, I guess. And it's in the dark.
Right. Okay, great funding should be discussed only after the work is completed.
Maybe just take a phrase in front of the section. When it's completed will be what's yours, sir. That contractor did that thing, he submitted the invoice and gets the money.
I wouldn't want to take away their right to sign off on the appropriateness of the improvement or the, you know, thoroughness of it.
I think it's fine to leave the final inspection on there. I don't, does that restrict them, do you think, that leaving the final inspection? I'm not sure why you're saying taking that off.
Final means the project, I said, if I need a project to comply. It might be partially done, that contractor's part of it is done.
So you're saying final inspection of the cross.
That's what I thought, man.
Versus the total project.
Oh, the partial.
Part of it was done.
Yeah.
That's probably implied, but you could just say an inspection.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think it's a hard task, you know, to discover.
Well, there's a disclaimer in here that gives you some discretion to make things, change things as you go. Yeah, yeah.
All right.
Great. Thank you very much. Do we need action on this now that we got the version, or did we take action? What do we need? Motion to approve?
Substantially in this form.
Sure. With the minor changes. There were seconds. Any other discussion? Vote, vote, please.
Mr. Cameron.
Aye.
Mr. Bowman.
Aye.
Mr. Collier.
Aye.
Mr. Beesold.
Aye.
Mr. Peterman.
Aye.
Excellent. All right, now we're down to new business. Thank you very much for all your hard work on that. That's awesome. Fire Department Annual Report, Chief Bailey.
You want to bring that up?
Oh, he's got it, assistant.
Can we get that on full screen?
I'll have to get that.
View full screen.
Grab this all down, Casey, so you'll be great. Here, turn around, look this way.
Full screen.
There we go. Nice, yay.
There you go, sir, and we'll just crack that off, and thankful.
Have at it.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Have some fun here. This is neat, Mayor Haas, this is neat, isn't it? I mean, this is what it's all about, this makes it work.
Still getting used to it.
I know, I know, I know, I know. Mayor Haas, thank you again. It's again a privilege and a pleasure to stand before you for my 15th year as your fire chief and deliver the Fire Department Annual Report for 2018, our 114th year in service. So we're very proud of those numbers, and we're going to talk about our people here as we go through here and some of the things that we've done, and obviously at the end be able to answer any questions you all may have toward us, but it is again a privilege to stand before you. 2018 was again a very busy year and a productive year for the Fire Department. We made 1,773 runs. That's 57 less than 217, but again, very busy, a lot of different, unique runs, as hopefully you had a chance, but if you didn't, I know we had some iPad issues, but if you have a chance to go through the report, you'll see again some different, unique runs that we had this past year. And again, our people did a wonderful job in handling those particular runs. Along with those numbers, we still remain the fourth busiest department in Campbell County behind Newport, Bellevue-Daten, Central Campbell, and then ourselves. So again, I just want to take a second just to thank some people. Obviously, as I said, thank you to Mayor Haas, the members of Board of Council. Again, it's a privilege and pleasure to work for you all. Mr. Dill, I couldn't ask for a better boss. Mr. Ewald is the Assistant CIO and the Finance Director. Again, wonderful people to work with, and we do that again very proudly each and every day. Melissa helps me out a great deal. She'll actually tomorrow, we have this annual report on our website, she keeps that updated for me so that we, you know, our people, our citizens, obviously can access that very easily and look at that particular, particular report on the website. Also need to thank the department heads. Although Chief Kilgore, myself, Police and Fire, we probably work the closest with each other. I can't say enough for Kevin Barbien, Debbie Buckley, again, all the people that work for those particular people. We work very closely, and that's what's neat about this city, is that we scratch each other's backs. If we need something, we pick up the phone and ask one another to help out, and vice versa, and we always look forward to those kinds of tasks throughout the day. So again, it's a real, real unique set of people, and again, that's what makes this city what it's all about. So again, I want to thank all those people. Have to take time to thank our Fire Department staff. I've got Captain Amen here this evening, shift two's on duty, and Chris came up, and I appreciate that. They're at four today. Again, you know our numbers, four to six, and again, but I appreciate that. But the personnel that we have, I say this every year, but I absolutely, truly mean it. Yeah, we have, we had a retirement this past year, we'll go through some of these things, as I said, but again, the people that we hire with Mayor Haas and Mr. Dill and myself on that board that, you know, finally interviewed, the final interview on those people, we hire only the best. And I know and feel every day, or I know and feel within my heart that we have eight, the 18 best firefighter paramedics in Northern Kentucky, hands down. Hands down, they're the best in the business. Every day, they handle the runs that's, you know, put before them in a very professional manner, and I can't thank them enough. And a lot of this report, as you'll see, or if you've already looked at it, hopefully, but if not, you know, they add to this report. They give me particular sections, I guess, them for some, you know, some of their sections, what they're responsible for, and they provide that for the report. So this report isn't me, it's the whole department, and that's what it's all about. So again, I have to thank them. It's truly a pleasure to work with them and be the chief, but those guys actually, those people, ladies and gentlemen, actually run that department. Our mission statement's pretty, is in there, but again, each year, again, we try to provide the fire and EMS services in the best and efficient manner, professional manner that we can, along with assisting, in trouble too, assisting our neighboring fire departments. We need mutual aid. Obviously, if four people going out on a structured fire today, we would have to call, obviously, for mutual aid. We do that every day, no matter what the numbers are, but everybody in the county scratches each other's backs, too, so we all work together. So it makes no difference. If we have a run on the north end, we're going to give Bellevue-Daten, Newport, et cetera, et cetera, across the county, across the city. So again, we need help, and we have a great working relationship with those departments. Obviously, firefighting remains one of the most stressful jobs, as you saw today with the fire in Paris, you know, they had 400 firefighters on the scene. It's a very stressful job, and again, one that we take again very seriously, and also dealing with what we call our fire service motto, and that's everyone goes home. A few years ago, I gave everybody a wristlet that I, you know, obviously wear every day that says everyone goes home. They come to work at 7:30 this morning, I want them to go home at 7:30 tomorrow morning. That's important. Families, they need their loved ones back, and we get to borrow them for the 24 hours. But I'm proud to say that we had no LODD, or line of duty deaths, in Kentucky last year, first time in a long time. No line of duty deaths for firefighters in Kentucky last year. There was 86 nationwide, normally that number's over 100, so that number's better, but 86 is not good. 86 doesn't work. But again, we had seven in 17 and five in 16, but no line of duty deaths last year. So that's again, a feather in our cap. We're doing things better, safer, we're training harder, and we're trying to do our jobs to the utmost of our abilities. So just some things there to get us started, and again, like I said, it's a privilege to be here. If I can get this to work, and I hope I can't, I've got the expert over there that's going to help me, but what I'd like to do is just kind of go through this. If you want to follow me, fine, I'm going to touch on some points at the end. If we need, you know, have any questions on anything, let me know, and we'll certainly come back and hit those points. Again, in front of you is our cover for this year, and again, one of the high points in the department's 2018 Annual Report was obviously reaching that ISO Class II status. We worked very hard at this. Captain Amen was one of the guys that kind of headed this up, and really, all of our officers did, and even some firefighters. But, you know, we're real pleased to be able to say, and I know Mr. Peterman had made a mention to it when we received that classification, how important that is for our homeowners, but also our businesses. There are very, there are very few Class II departments. We went from Class III to Class II, but again, we're really proud of that, and I think ISO, you know, when they come in and met with us, they were very interested in some of the things that we're doing at the Fort Thomas Fire Department. So I can't, again, was probably one of our real high points, obviously, for the year. So we wanted that on the cover. I know last month, I think you all got a letter from retired Captain Sampas, and it kind of pointed that out, and we love our retirees, they come back once a month for lunch on the first Tuesday, Jerry's usually there. But again, it was, didn't ask Jerry to do that, but obviously, his interest in the Fire Department, he heard about it, and so he, you know, he thought he felt like he needed to write a letter. So I thank Jerry for that, but again, we're real proud of that, so. That's a pointer.
You are you.
Uh-oh. Okay. Just the initial letter, again, I'm not a reinvent the wheel guy, so those of you that have been on council for a while, it's still the same format. Again, but our people, as I said, do most of the reporting, or a lot of the reporting, I should say most, but a lot of the reporting for their specific topics. Again, just the letter referencing our numbers and the things that we do in the Fire Department. Of course, obviously, the table of contents, which is in there. Why is it doing that to you? Okay, there we go. Each month, the monthly report, that's kind of my perspective. Uh, each, uh, each month, the monthly report, that's kinda my perspective, uh, the year in review, kinda talking about the things that went on, so I just basically kinda highlight those, those, uh, in the chief's perspective as far as what went on throughout the year. So, you've got that on the next pages, page two and three, just to kinda, you know, give you an idea of, uh, a kind of a recap, again, of the year. Uh, again, our, in, in extent, our Fire Department, uh, mission statement, uh, there is page four. Uh, and this year, I did something different. Just going to our guys, 'cause you don't wanna look at me. Anyway, I did something a little different. A friend of mine came to me and, uh, is a professional photographer, long story short, and wanted to know if I, if I wanted to do some, some professional shots of our people, and I said, "Yeah, I think that would be neat." You know, we had nice pictures of, of the guys, but, uh, you know, I thought, yes, I think that would be nice. It would add to the, obviously, to the annual report, but, but also down in the fire apparatus bay, we have, we have a picture on display, so please stop down and see that, along with, uh, our shift, the shift pictures, and I let them kinda decide what they wanted to do on that. So, this year, I took formal photographs, you know, uh, you allocate money for us to, you know, to purchase things, one is a class-A uniform, uh, and I thought that was important that we get a picture of them in their class day. So, there you have the three captains and three lieutenants, respectively, uh, by rank or by seniority, and then, of course, you have the, the firefighters in the pictures there. So, again, I'm real proud of those guys, and, again, stop over, look at the board, it's really neat, uh, the Fire Department Board, along with, uh, um, you know, Elaine and some other people. So, again, that's something I wanted to kinda point out. There's our shifts, how they're set up, shift one, two, and three. Again, I mentioned shift two today, Captain Amon, uh, and shift one is Captain Lump, and Tammy Webster is captain on shift three. Uh, responsibilities, it's in there every year, what they're responsible for, as I said, I don't do the report or the whole thing, I kinda put it together, which, uh, uh, but they, you know, kinda provide the information for what they're responsible for, and, uh, we have a vast variety of programs, all the way from car seat installations, pre-plans, and we'll touch on that here in a second, but, again, all of their responsibilities. Uh, Elaine Henderson, obviously, is our administrative assistant. She works Monday through Wednesday, uh, does a phenomenal job. I don't have to worry about insurance billing, squad billing, uh, people wanting copies of reports, she takes care of all that, and, believe me, that's an everyday process, uh, in and of itself, uh, to, to accomplish. And so Elaine does a great job with that, answering the phones, obviously, but, uh, she takes care of all that kind of administrative stuff, along with, with, uh, you know, typing letters for the officers on inspections and other things. Um, uh, another high point this year is we had a Ken Cliff, a retired firefighter/paramedic to our department, is our Fire Department Chaplain. You're seeing more of that, uh, in the fire service, and, uh, Ken, uh, obviously, uh, was ordained, and so we thought it was real important, obviously, met with Mr. Dill, and, uh, again, Ken's been a great addition to, uh, to our department. He stops in periodically, he'll spend, you know, most of the day with us, is here a lot for those Tuesday lunches, the first of the month, but, again, uh, he's in and, and around a lot more than, than, uh, or a lot of the time, so... And, of course, firefighter/paramedic Matt Stewart, retired in August of eighteen with over twenty years of service, and Matt still occasionally stops in, still lives down on River Road, and, and, again, uh, Matt was a wonderful, uh, uh, part of our, uh, department, and, uh, Mike Wright, obviously, took his place, uh, when, when Matt retired, so just some ideas there. Uh, whoops. Getting haves. Uh, anyway, uh, grants, yeah, just, just to touch on grants, those are the grants that we've received through the years. Uh, this year, uh, not on there, but, but this year, just some things that went on. We got a treadmill from the Fire Commission for the fitness room downstairs. Uh, we received a new treadmill, so that was, uh, again, free of charge. Uh, we just received a grant for a thermal imager, uh, in the amount of thirty-two-hundred dollars from the Fire Commission. So, again, uh, you know, those kinds of things are important, and, as you know, and you hear me tell every month, or tell here recently, um, um, that we have actually two other grants in at FEMA right now, and they're reviewing them, and, and hopefully, hopefully, we've been told April, so hopefully, they'll start releasing those grants. I know they were out of, uh, gone for a little while, but back. Uh, one is for, uh, again, um, it's a county grant that we wrote, uh, for the seven, eight-hundred radio, megahertz radio system, uh, for the county, which is about almost a million dollars. And then we also put in for a grant for ourselves for a exhaust system, uh, in the appar- on the apparatus floor, uh, to, uh, remove the exhaust fumes when the truck starts. Again, a health, uh, scenario for us, uh, critical because, obviously, our sleeping quarters are upstairs, the pole hole, the steps, of course, start the trucks, uh, goes up, uh, you know, we can get exhaust fumes up there. So, again, we got our fingers crossed on that, on those two grants. Uh, we also helped write one for the county on a new safety house, which, uh, we'll mention, or is in the fire prevention, uh, part of this. So, again, the safety house is, is, uh, something that, uh, is nineteen-eighty-six, so it's kinda getting older. We use that, you probably see that lot in October, and so, again, uh, we, we do take a lot of pride in writing the grants because it helps the city. It helps, you know, you, uh, in turn, and that's our goal, is to try to help you, uh, with the funding also, and so we see any of the grants, we're gonna go out there and go after them, similar to what, uh, Chief Kilgore was talking about with his grants. Uh, professional affiliations, like always, national, statewide, we're involved with a lot of programs, uh, regionally, uh, and, and locally also. Again, uh, you know, we talk about those from different times with the reports. Uh, fire, uh, public fire education, as you know, October's a big month for us, the numbers are there, you know, um, um, and so, um, you know, we, we see a lot of people throughout the month, some pictures, and, again, we take a lot of pride in that pushing fire prevention, uh, throughout the year, but particularly in the month of August, and, again, as I mentioned, the safety house, we kinda talked about that. That, uh, by the way, is Lieutenant Eric Scherpenberg takes care of the fire prevention, and, again, uh, Eric has a ball with that with the kids and poster contests and all those kinds of things. So, uh, again, just some things in regard to, uh, the fire prevention. I know one of the things we did this year was, uh, Highlands High School. Uh, Mr. Paul from Highlands High School does our P S A announcements every year at the football game, won an award through, uh, through, uh, the Northern Kentucky Firefighters Association. Uh, Chris Rust put him in for that, and so we're real proud of him, Mr. Paul, and we have to recognize Highlands High School, some of the things that they do, year in and year out, again, for us to make it a safer environment for our citizens. Uh, staff development, uh, Fire Safety Training Officer is Captain Steve Lump, so Steve put a lot of, he's got a lot of the statistics in there, like I said, kinda go through there and see, uh, the various, uh, number of hours that we spend, and some of the training, some of the photos, some of the trainings that we provide, there's our, you know, uh, breakdown on the training. You know, EMS, uh, obviously, we're a fire department, uh, providing EMS services, paramedic services, but, again, I mention this every year, paramedic services are about ninety percent of our job, eighty-five to ninety percent. Uh, we, the ambulance is our biggest P R tool. It runs more than any other piece of equipment in the building. So, again, uh, we do a lot of training in regard to EMS, but also the other topics are there that we, uh, that we also cover. Uh, send some people, I do some outside training, obviously, we have to get our people through fire inspections and investigations and things like that, so we send our people to a lot of classes, and that's just some of them that we've done on outside training for twenty-eighteen. Again, some pictures there, I think, I think that's Captain Amon. Anyway, um, fire inspections are, are, along with pre-plans, uh, the fire inspectors are our lieutenants, and the pre-plans, Casey Carr, Lieutenant Carr's kinda headed up, but, again, I wanna reiterate, we're one hundred percent on fire inspections and on our pre-plans. And up until last year, set, late seventeen into eighteen, uh, we weren't, we were not one hundred percent. So, that's something that I've stressed to those people, and we now have three great lieutenants that are out every day doing inspections, and, and a lot of firemen that are working on pre-plans, uh, and getting drawings in that back that Casey's kinda putting in the computer, and so we have all of our buildings inspected, and all of our pre-plans are up to date with our buildings, so we know what we're going into when we go into those fires. So, again, something that I can't, uh, can't stress enough of the importance of that. Uh, EMS, Captain Tammy Webster's our EMS coordinator, she does a great job, there's an idea of our nature of runs, uh, and the number of runs, et cetera, twelve-hundred-and-forty-five, again, uh, on just EMS calls last year. Um, so, again, just some idea there on our nature of runs. Uh, again, falls is our number-one, uh, item that we, uh, make runs on, people that fall. Uh, age distribution, uh, there. And, again, just some things that you can look through there that, that Captain Webster has. The statistics, uh, Captain Lump, back to him again, he does all these stats for me, kinda get together, talk about what we wanna do, some new things, some, take some things out, put some new things in, et cetera, but you can see our training hours there as far as fire and EMS, and what our people train on, and we exceed those state requirements in, in every category with the bottom, uh, graph. So, just, again, something that, that I think is kinda neat to show. Incident types, uh, you know, uh, as far as, uh, during the month, uh, time of day, uh, fire and EMS time of day, both of them combined, as well as a comparison of those, so just some forced, uh, statistics there. See our total EMS run, or total fire and EMS runs, they're at the bottom on eighteen, as I mentioned, twelve-forty-five EMS, four-oh-seven fire. The one-twenty-one is a diff- is a different number, that's first response. First response means that if we're out on a run and we get another call for an EMS call, that's a first response run. That's how that's designated, and, again, uh, you know, we made one-twenty-one of those last year. So, again, um, we do make a lot of back-to-back runs, uh, we, we run, uh, uh, three ALS units at this point, um, but, again, um, uh, through eighteen we did, so, again, um, those numbers are, are there for you to see. By time of day, or by days of week, I should say, um, again, you know, how many runs we made, or what's a, what's a normal. Fire incident types, again, um, some, some graphs there that kinda display, uh, again, the most of, again, as we said, was rescue and EMS, uh, followed very closely by good intent calls, things like, can you check our smoke detectors, can you check our carbon monoxide detectors, we've got a smell of something, whatever that may be, gas or whatever, so those kinds of runs are good intent calls. Fire incident response, again, uh, there as far as numbers. Recalls, real important, I mentioned, you know our numbers, six, uh, is a maximum on shift, we can go down to four. If we make back-to-back runs, uh, or we make, uh, uh, an auto accident where two pieces of equipment are going out of the building at the same time, we recall, and that's what those numbers are. And as you can see, you can see the number of recalls up there, and we average about, we average right at four people coming back for those recalls. So, that's real important, it gets me, gets us four more people in the building to, to handle the next call, and that, you know, can be any time of the day or night, so that's real important. Uh, Mutu Aid, I mentioned how important that is, we make a lot of runs with people, plus we ask them to make runs with us, so those are those numbers there for twenty-eighteen, both, uh, you know, given and received, as well as, uh, how many people we, we, uh, got in, you know, how many people we also delivered to people on Mutu Aid. Fire loss trends, up a little bit last year, we hit a couple of fires. Uh, again, we keep stressing the importance, but, but those, those, as you see, those things run in cycles, again, something to keep in mind. Again, I think the patient by, the patients by gender is real, kinda neat to look at as far as female and male, just something different there as far as our type of, or our gender, as far as the runs we make EMS-wise. Whoops. And, uh, again, uh, B L S and A L S type trends, uh, as well as, you know, sometimes we treat a patient, we don't, if we make the run, we treat a patient only, we do not transport, we do not bill. The billing scenario, but if we transport, we obviously bill for that run, and that was basically by going to the insurance company. We, there's nobody in the county, hard bills, but we, we bill the insurance companies to see what we can, can get out, insurance companies, 'cause that's what they're responsible to do, is to pay for those ambulance runs, and so, again, uh, good scenario set up with that. And responses by unit, as I said, you can see there, uh, that we, you know, as far as fire units, so six-oh-ones are being popped now. Uh, additional EMS, uh, uh, data there that you can see. Hydrants, obviously, we, we check our hydrants annually, uh, we, we, uh, through a course period of five years, every hydrant is, is flowed by us, it's also flowed every year by the water district, so every hydrant in the city is flowed every year, but we go out and specifically do, uh, some, some additional maintenance, some additional flow testing with the hydrants, and so those are the numbers there, and, and firefighter/paramedic Josh Edmondson, as well as Captain Amon kinda take care of that. And then that's just some statistics on our, on our, um, fitness program, again, uh, from Captain Webster. Um, real, real important, we stress fitness, most shifts are down there three-ish, four, three to three-thirty in the afternoon to work out, uh, and, and they get a good workout, and it's really important, of course, obviously, you know, a lot of firefighters die from cardiac-related emergencies, so it's real important that we try to set the P Ds down there a lot at the same time, so that, again, is that working relationship camaraderie, and that's what it's all about in this city. Uh, and I think that's it in regard to that. Again, I, I can't, uh, I can't stress, uh, you know, um, the, uh, thankfulness from us to you for what, for letting us do our jobs, uh, year in and year out, it's a pleasure and honor, and, uh, I'll be glad to field any questions that you got, that you all may have, sorry, you all may have in regard to the Fire Department, and, uh, with that...
I can't believe you've been here fifteen years. That was the first thing you said, I'm gone.
My gosh.
Yeah.
It has been long. Does, does anybody have any questions for the chief?
And, again, it's a pleasure.
Great report.
I appreciate you letting me do it.
You guys do a great job, we appreciate it.
Me do our job and us do our jobs, it's great to work for you all, and, uh, again, I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, chief, there.
Thank you.
All right, we are now to Police Department Annual Report.
He brought extra batteries in case I wore out the batteries on the clicker. That's a great compliment.
That's awesome.
I was just worried I was gonna die on me.
Yeah.
Okay, good evening. Thank you all very much for letting me present my first Annual Report.
That's right.
Police Department. I'll, Chief Bailey said that this is a great place to work because of the people in this room and the people that we employ in our police departments and fire departments. Um, when I took this position last summer, I was scared to death, and you guys have made it really easy on me, and the police officers have made it great on me too, so I've just been having the time of my life in the past year. So, we'll kick right into this, you guys can feel free to stop me at any time if I didn't explain something well, just stop me and ask, and we'll talk about what's in here, so... We cover there's a couple pictures of, uh, things we've had going on for the past year, City Seal, table of contents, we'll run through that, of course. My first letter basically just says, "I think we have the greatest police officers around, and I'm lucky to have them working with me. They do all the work, and it's great, um, very dedicated, hardworking, and very well-trained, so we're lucky to have them." Uh, our shifts break down that way, I'm up with a copy, you guys all know who you are, but when we get down to the bottom, we have three shifts of six. Um, first shift comes in at six A.M. and works until two, second shift is two to ten, and third shift works overnight from ten at night until two in the morning. Um, reflected in those shifts, on first, Officer Zach Rolfer has been assigned as our school resource officer, so August through May, he's in the schools full-time, Monday through Friday. Um, there on second shift, Brad Rickenbach, who we just hired, is still in training, he'll go through, we have him scheduled for eight weeks of in-house training because he's a lateral. If he's picked the streets up really well, we may let him out before then, but we like to plan for eight, so Brad is still with a training officer. And then on night shift, with one lieutenant, one sergeant, and four patrolmen, that's where we have been pulling our traffic officer from, so we rotate through those guys, we give them a one-month opportunity at a time, and they really enjoy a break from night shift. Some guys just can't get used to that sleeping schedule, some guys love it, but, uh, we've offered it to all of them, and, and everyone has said, "Yes, they love a month of Monday through Friday of day shift," so it keeps them fresh in that position, and we'll keep pulling someone from there to, uh, to address those concerns as they come up.
Batteries. Not at all.
I love it.
Reboot, reboot.
Okay, there's all of us. With the exception of Mike Daly has retired, and Brad Rickenbach has been retired, that's all of us, um, there down at the mess hall, had really good weather that day, got some pictures taken. Um, our whole command staff. Our whole command staff, myself, three lieutenants and three sergeants, great, great group of people to work with. Whenever I'm not here, it's just so nice to know that they're running shifts extremely well, all very well-liked and very well-respected, doing a great job running our three shifts. Our three detectives, Derek Thott, Nick Hoffman, and Detective Mike Rowland. Both Derek and Nick are new last year due to other people getting promoted. They slid into investigations, and they're both doing great. Mike Rowland has been a detective with us for a few years, but only assigned to the Drug Strike Force starting January of 18. So he's been doing a heck of a job in that role, and we'll get into some of his numbers later. And as you know, last summer, Mike was offered the opportunity to get a canine partner, which was something that he actually loves doing. He did it when he worked with Highland Heights Police, and he was very happy to get a dog back. And we'll talk about that a little bit more, too, about how that process worked. First shift, one lieutenant, one sergeant, three patrolmen, and our SRO, or SRO. Second shift, third shift. And then the first big, big change that we experienced in 2018 was the retirement of Mike Daly. Mike Daly served as a police officer for 27 years. His first two or three were with the city of Newport, and then he had the opportunity to come home here to Fort Thomas, which he certainly jumped at. He had many, many different roles, starting with dare, and then into detective, sergeant, lieutenant, and finally, chief. And he served as our police chief for 13 years. During his tenure as chief, he went to the FBI National Academy, which is a class that less than 1% of all police officers in the United States get to go to. So it's very prestigious, and I know he had a great time while he was there. He also earned his master's degree and oversaw the complete remodel of our police department. One of the coolest stories about Mike Daly actually happened back when he was a detective, when he inherited the skeletal remains on the riverbank of Route 8, commonly referred to as the Bones Case. If you get over to page 10, that one picture with all the stuff laid out on the table, where he has a little bit of hair left on the top of his head, that was back in 1999 when he was working the Bones Case. So everything there were the remains that were found, clothing, keys, glasses, and the keys, the way the keys were printed, and the initials on the keys ended up was the, was the key, so to speak, that helped him unlock who it was, where that person came from, and what they think happened to him, and how it ended up, how his skeleton ended up here on the riverbank.
That's cool.
So Mike did a great job. Everybody liked working for him. He was a good guy to be around and a good friend, so we miss him already. Hoffman on? He's going, it's getting bad, I bet you. There we go. So when Mike Daly retired, I slid in there as chief. Been at it for almost a year, and I'm just, I'm totally having a blast. I really, really enjoy it. And there's all the pictures of the night I got my chief's badge. Glad my family could join me. On the heels of my promotion, we were able to promote Sergeant Brent Munning to lieutenant and Detective Nathan Day to sergeant. So Lieutenant Brent Munning currently serves as our administrative lieutenant. He's kind of the go-to guy, he's the jack of all trades. Whenever Chief Bailey needs something, he does go to Brent and skip me, because Brent gets it done so much quicker and more effectively. Great guy to have around, anything that you could think of administratively, he puts his best foot forward, and he's really doing an excellent job, exceeding our expectations. Sergeant Nathan Day was promoted, and he runs second shift. That picture on the bottom right, they didn't have in the first run of this, of this annual report, and I went to Brent and said, where's that picture of Nathan's dad hugging him? That's the best picture we have in our whole police department. So that was the night Nathan made sergeant, his family came up, you can see in the pictures there. Proud Papa gave him a big hug there at the bottom, and Nathan's doing a bang-up job running second shift. Great guy. Also new in 2018, Mike was assigned his furry little friend Rexo. To make a long story short, Mike is assigned to the Drug Strike Force, which is a commitment that we made mostly in response to the heroin epidemic that we've seen the last four or five years. And in that role, he was offered the opportunity to receive a canine officer, or canine partner. The dog was donated, the money to buy the dog was donated, the five-week training where Mike and Rexo went away to Pennsylvania was covered by the Strike Force, and they've been working hard at it since he came back from training in July. The five-week training was in Pennsylvania. He, he is a certified, single-use drug detection dog. That means all that he's been trained in is sniffing out and locating drugs. He's not an apprehension dog, he's not going to go chase a bad guy through the woods and bite his arm, he just sniffs for drugs, that's all he does. And they've had some really, really big seizures because of Rexo's good work. So we're happy to have Mike in that role, and we're happy to have Rexo working with him. Also new in 2018, we made a commitment to put one of our officers as a school resource officer.
Full-time for the school.
So we did a little internal selection process. We picked Zach Rolfer, and he's been doing a bang-up job working within our schools. I've talked with Zach about his activity, and I think he might be one of the busiest guys on the police department, because he handles things on a daily basis that the schools may not have called us for previously. You know, to pick up the phone and to bring a police officer in, a little bit different step in just calling back on his cellphone and saying, hey, can you come down to my room and talk to this kid, or have a question about how this works, or can you come in and talk to my class about constitution? So Zach really stays busy with just the day-to-day being in the school stuff. And he enjoys it quite a bit, you know, he's happy to have that schedule, and he loves working with the kids. And having him in there full-time, in my opinion, it's a luxury. I mean, it's, it's really nice to have a school resource officer. We're lucky to have Zach doing it. Professional excellence. So our officers asked to participate in a couple of different firearms matches last year. I'll go backwards. The first one, they did a three-gun match. They qualified at the Northern Kentucky match, which qualified them to go down to the statewide match, and they all did very well in that. But going back to the first one, they participated in a bit more competitive pistol match at the Cincinnati Northern Kentucky Airport. And as you can see in that small narrative there, we put in two teams of three, and one of our teams won first place. What's interesting about that is our officers go to the range on duty three times per year, once in the spring, once in the summer, and once in the fall. So for these guys to show up at a competition and beat teams from Kentucky State Police in Boone County, as you can imagine, they have larger resources, more range time, and bigger budgets than we do. Those three guys really put in a lot of work on their own time with firearms proficiency. Hopefully, something we'll ever, ever have to use, but shooting officer have to deploy his pistol, we certainly want him to hit what he's aiming at. So we were very proud of these three guys to win first place.
Statewide.
A couple of awards. Detective Nick Hoffman received the Governor's Occupant Protection Enforcement Award. That is a fancy word for he wrote the most seatbelt tickets last year in 2018. So we got to go down to Lexington and meet with other people who wrote a lot of seatbelt tickets and have a nice lunch. And the same for Officer Joe Palucci. He won the Governor's Impaired Driving Enforcement Award, which is another phrase for DUI and driving intoxicated. So Joe had the most impaired driving arrests for our department for that cycle of October 1, 17 through September 30 of 18. Next up, we see this almost every year in different forms. City of Fort Thomas selected as the safest city in Kentucky. There are a couple of different companies out there that run these numbers and do these surveys. Most of them are driven by uniform crime reporting, which is basically the number of crimes reported to us divided by our population, or how many crimes we have per thousand residents. For this particular survey, we were ranked number one in the state. And as we've seen in past years, we usually hit the top 10, if not first. So it's always nice to read those reports where an independent agency is ranking us the safest city in Kentucky. The next few slides will all be stats. The first one, just non-traffic charges, broken down into all the different things that someone could be arrested for, cited for, outside of, you know, traffic like speeding and the stop signs, comparison with 2018 and 2017. Next, all of our traffic charges, again, broken down by the various things that people receive citations for, with a comparison of 2018 and 2017. Juvenile charges, thankfully, we don't have a whole lot of those, but anything that a juvenile could, would be charged for, we have broken down there on the various subcategories going down the left-hand side there, once again, with a comparison to last year of 2017. Okay, this slide here is offense reports. So that's not people getting arrested, it's not people getting tickets. Those are crimes that are reported to us, and the police officer takes a police report. So if you come home and you found that your lawnmower's been stolen, you call the police, someone shows up and takes your report, that would be an offense report. A couple numbers there towards the top that look really good and we're happy to report about, that theft down year-to-year from 124 to 79, that's a great trend that we love to see. And burglaries down from 25 to 6, pretty dramatic reduction. We've talked with other detectives around the county, and it seems as though a slight downtick in thefts and burglaries, there's a county-wide trend, one that we're absolutely happy to see. And replaced with that, we've tried to stay on top of all the different scams, phone scams, internet scams, email scams. When I talk with my detectives about what's hot, those are, those are the areas that they're trying to, trying to keep a lid on things as much as they can. And total offenses down at the bottom, 672 in 2017, down to 509 in 2018. So again, a trend we're happy to see and report about. Incident reports would be anytime we take a report for someone that doesn't rise to the level of a crime, as we saw in the last slide. So missing people, vehicles getting damaged, neighbor disputes, things like that, those numbers up next. Down at the bottom, all of our felonies, whether it was a felony placed against a juvenile, felony resulting from a traffic stop, or felony from a non-traffic stop, just add up how many felonies, and there they are for the past eight years. That tiny little box on the, on the lower right is one I really want to talk about. That's our total CAD activity for the year. CAD stands for Computer-Aided Dispatch. So anytime someone calls 911, or the 292 number, anytime someone has an officer come to their house, any accident, any traffic stop, anything like that we, that we do, generates its own number for that incident. So for the past three years, we're running mid-14,000 for total Cads for the year. Traffic enforcement, you can look through that, broken down by DUI, speeding, all the different things that people get cited for. One trend that we have seen, and we've talked about this with everyone who works night shift, is for the past eight, nine years, DUIs have been on kind of a steady decline. We all feel pretty confident that Uber and Lyft have been a pretty good, pretty good thing for our communities in terms of providing different opportunities to get home safely instead of getting behind the wheel. So when I talk to my night shift guys and I say, why are DUIs down so much? They say, look, they're just not out there. Everyone we pull over is an Uber driver or a Lyft driver. So again, a trend that I'm happy to report on.
That's really good.
Yeah. So, you know, yellow cab, Uber, Lyft, and friends, we really hope that people continue to make those good choices. Let me see those numbers continue to go down. In the black section there, we talk a little bit about traffic charges and written warnings, and then we add up in the middle there, total enforcement, and then we break things down as a percentage of written warnings. If you look all the way back through 2011, we're somewhere around 50, 45% of our traffic stops end up in a warning. So, as the gentleman spoke at the beginning, he was on the 45% that got the warning for the stop sign. And then city citations, those mostly revolve around parking. Traffic accidents, that last graph, pretty stable, around 300, going all the way back to 2011, not a whole lot of swings there. Next few pages are all about training. We broke this down by officer, and what I would like to say is that we are very, very fortunate that we have a supportive environment where we can send our officers to not only their mandatory 40-hour training per year, but any training that will help them do their job, their specialized positions, their extra activities, all the little feathers that they put in their hat. Our officers do a great job of seeking out free training, online training, local training. If they can get someplace that will help them, and it doesn't hurt our schedule too badly, we try to say yes as much as we can. So you can see, just flipping through here, a couple of these officers, not all of those are weeks, some of those could be a one-day class or an online class. When we get over to Derek and Nick, they were both new detectives last year, so they sought out quite a bit of internet investigations. All those classes that start with CI were online. So they did a bunch with the National White Collar Commission, things about the dark web and social media and encryption and how all that stuff works. They really put themselves through quite a few online trainings just to keep up with all the different technological crimes that we see these days. So again, thank you to everyone in this room. We get a lot of good training, and we're happy, happy, happy to do it. Going past individual officer training, we'll get into firearms. Couple things you can see in these next two slides, I'll just go back and forth here. The first is, if you look at all of these eight pictures, you're only going to see two where police officers are standing in line shooting at a piece of paper, and that's probably our qualification. All the rest are behind a car, or behind a barrel, or behind two barrels. And the reason for that is our firearms training officers are very passionate about giving us the best, dynamic firearm training they can give us while we're at the range. We get three days per year, one in the spring, one in the summer, one in the fall, and that's probably a little bit above average for Northern Kentucky, but in the big scheme of things, we want to make the best of those hours that we're out there. So we're not just standing there stable, shooting at a piece of paper, we're moving, we're shooting, we're getting behind cover. That bottom right picture, that car was donated by a tow company, it was a salvage car that they let us have out of our range. So officers were allowed to visualize being behind their crutches for a cop. So at one point, those windows ended up being gone, and they were shooting through the car into the target. It was really good hands-on training, so we were thankful that we got that car. Also under firearms, our pistols and our rifles, they don't last forever, and unfortunately, they kind of met the end of their life relatively close to one another. Good news was, we got a fire sale on our Glocks, so we traded in our old six-hour pistols, got brand-new generation five Glock 17s in a 9mm caliber, which allows one person to focus primarily on traffic issues. We actually have a list in Excel of all the traffic complaints that have come in, when they came in, and all the steps that we have taken. Some of those steps include a STELSET, which is a device that goes up on a telephone pole, measures every single car that drives through an area, tells us how many cars go down the street on a given period of time, what the average speed is, what the 85th percentile is, which people love talking about, the fastest speed, the slowest speed.
Anything about that species, it's very difficult to manage, so there's a, there's a high cost involved with that that the conservancy would face. The city would use a different method than they would use to alleviate that issue. So really, I don't want to say it's a temporary revert of the intention of the easement back to the city, but in some sense, it allows the city to kind of deal with some of those outstanding issues and take the conservancy out of an awkward position of having rights to that easement. So they're simply asking that the city take back the easement at this time, and I think the intention from our point of view would be to address those items and make whole that area. It doesn't change what the city's intentions for the park in that area are. In fact, they've offered to continue their participation. We work with them, and they do reforestation projects down there in hopes of creating the higher story growth on the conservancy easement areas. That's still intention in the city. It just, it just allows us to address some of those issues in their stead. So that's really the nature of the request, and I think the way the easement was written, it would just take an action by council to accept the terms of the easement and put the city in the position to continue that conservation easement as the steward of the easement in its same form.
Any questions? Would someone like to make motion to that effect?
Would someone like to make a motion to that effect? Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? We'll call vote.
Mr. Cameron?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Falyer?
Aye.
Mr. Beasley?
Aye.
Mr. Peterman?
Aye.
We also, another item of new business, we have a report from the Public Safety Committee. Take it away, Ed.
We had a grievance filed, so I'm going to read off my paper here because it's annoying, so I'm just quoting. Public Safety Committee meeting met prior to the meeting to discuss a grievance, followed by, what is the name of that? ABSCME, the American Federation of State Unmanned Civil Employees. We all agreed with management's interpretation of the contract denial of this.
Is that required action? No, that's just a report, right? That wouldn't require any legal action on our part?
Well, I think we want to respond to that. Remember the rules procedure doesn't affect the consent of the council.
Oh, so council needs to accept that?
The council maybe accept the report, meaning to say, just for me.
Okay, so would someone like to make a motion to accept that? Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion?
Well, I mean, I wasn't at that meeting, so I would like a little bit more context, people voting on that.
The context of the grievance?
Of, yeah, I mean, I understand that we're essentially agreeing with the committee's recommendation, but without being in that meeting and hearing anything about it at all, other than Councilman Blouse, what he's written, I wouldn't feel comfortable.
Well, I can give you an overview of the issue. The issue involved a callback for overtime to do snow removal, so it's an emergency order procedure for callback. The grievance was centered around the idea that there was a seniority clause in their work agreement. There was a group that was called back, there was a period of time that lapsed, and then there was a second callback, and the aggrieved party felt like we should have gone back as management and called the same group back again. The contract doesn't state specifically what time lapse period would occur before you make a callback. And so, absent of any language that dictates that, the only language in the contract makes reference to a 12-hour work shift. It wasn't a period beyond 12 hours that had lapsed, and so the second group was brought in, and they felt like they should have been recalled for that second group to perform that function. So management's position is that we follow protocol, there was no violation of that practice. We typically work with a potential up to a 12-hour shift and up and beyond that. Again, the contract is silent on the time lapse period for second call out, and that's really where the issue of the grievance came from.
Jan, were you in the meeting? Did you?
Okay.
It's sort of a process of management, the group's way of acting, and then management presents, the committee presents to the council, council supports management, but does not support it.
Okay.
It's a process of agreement.
Sure.
Any other questions or comments? We'll call vote, please.
Mr. Cameron?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Falyer?
Aye.
Mr. Beasley?
Aye.
Okay, I have one other item of new business.
I received an email from Grayway Development, who is the developer that has a proposal for the Center of Town Development, and he said, Eric, I'd like to request a meeting with city council to discuss the finances of our Fort Thomas Town Center development and the required enhancements. Also, please provide us with the outline of your development agreements so we can start working on this as well. Thank you. So I open it up to suggest maybe we send it to finance committee to meet with the developer, and obviously anybody at council is willing to attend, to go through whatever their requests are in working on development. Any other questions?
Should we refer to committee or?
I'd refer to finance committee, and then they can meet with the developer, again, anybody at council is willing to attend that meeting, and then they would bring that back to council for further decisions.
You know, as opposed to somebody appearing before council, then the council, to committee or, I don't know, we started meeting once a month and they can really stretch it out if you have to go, and then committee even back to council. So it makes sense to me, I mean, obviously, everybody's willing to attend, just to move the process along, right? You know, time away because there are contracts involved, and we actually, I think it's pretty risky for budgeting.
Well, to me, it's a, it's a pretty important issue, and I don't know exactly what is on that agenda, but I, for one, am not on the finance committee. I would obviously plan on being at this facility. So if, I don't know if others feel the same, but I think it's a pretty specific and important request that we should all have some input on from the get-go.
Yeah, Roger's point is well-taken, is with only meeting once a month, refer to committee, that gives us an opportunity to actually deal with these issues and then bring it back to council at another time, and obviously, anybody's welcome to be there. The planning committee would be the appropriate committee to take it to.
I just, I didn't know if, you know, we could call a special meeting, essentially, of the whole. Of the whole.
Well, we could have a committee of the whole as a committee meeting, but it wouldn't necessarily be a council meeting. It would be just strictly related to meeting with the developer on that.
That's kind of the direction that I'm thinking that we need to take.
Does that make a difference? Whether it goes with.
I'm not sure if it does, it's just, well, I mean, I guess that.
Well, it would be a different.
Well, I don't know why this is true, but it seems like people coming to council, then we refer it to committee, and then, and there's nothing right to come to council, you know, but this is apparent, so, and so it's just a matter of, okay, we have to wait three months before it actually gets back to council.
Well, I would be fine with sending it to committee of the whole, that's fine, either way.
Is there something that needs to pass the planning side? Or does it ask for these?
There are several levels where the development has to go, where they have to go. This is specifically coming to request a development agreement with the city, so yes, this would be a part that we would have to go through.
We need to do this. No, we don't.
No, not necessarily. But if we refer it to committee, we can set the committee at any point. If we just refer it to committee of the whole, we'll wait and pick a time that works through the developer and the rest of us.
Yeah, I just don't, never would have ever said, we've never told somebody, well, go to the committee, for some things, actually, you know, they said we first meeting was with the committee. That's not been what we've done in the past.
Be more expedient to probably meet as, you know, the whole. Agree.
All right. So we want to make that motion?
A motion that the, as progress made on what's the development of the Center of Town Call.
They just refer to it as next used developer. It hasn't been.
He calls it Fort Thomas Town Center Development.
Fort Thomas Town Center Development. The presence that the committee of the whole being able to meet to discuss that project, full recommendations to the citizens.
With the developer. With the developer. Yeah, he wants to meet with. Second. Any further discussion? We'll call vote, please.
Mr. Cameron?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Falyer?
Aye.
Mr. Beasley?
Aye.
Mr. Peterman?
Aye.
Okay, that, and just for clarification, staff will send out a potential meeting schedule, and then it'll be advertised as a meeting.
Right.
With the public, so.
Yeah, whether there is a meeting, it's dependent on certain other events, which we don't know.
Okay, we are, that's all.
One second. I think I might have made a mistake, but I'm not sure if it's correct or wrong. We met earlier, two out of three of us in the meeting about the street de-paving program. Read to that, and I did not like it because I wanted to evaluate the grant through the 64th street, but I voted I with that, I thought you, I was confused on what I was accepting.
You voted I to proceed with the improvement program as we had, as it was presented and we had the public hearing about. We didn't go to any, into any specific details about our prior meeting related to the, you know, if you wanted to weigh in on the Grant Street proposal specifically, we didn't go there.
That didn't have anything to do with that, I thought it was.
Yeah, that did not have to come to a vote because the committee said, we're going to stick with the original plan, so the vote was just to proceed with the street.
Well, yeah, there's two out of three of us, so we stick with the original plan, and I did not want to stick with it. So should they say on that thing?
No, that wasn't voted on, because it came out of committee, committee decided not to make an adjustment to the original street plan, and so the vote was for accepting and going ahead with the street plan, if that makes sense. However, if it had been the other way around, the first thing that would have happened would have been to bring up to change the process and then to accept the street plan.
So there is no possibility of change at this point to adjust the program, the transfer, you know, by the day, we don't even talk about it again, we just accept it. So we just accepted the, the entire street program?
What typical protocol, so, and just for clarification, in case somebody doesn't, isn't following the conversation, the Public Work Committee met prior to this meeting to review the comments and make a recommendation to council based on what was presented as this year's 2019 street program. Included in that is Grant Street. At the public hearing, there was questions brought forward by a couple of members, and it was noted in the report, who had asked for a consideration of 640. In committee, that was discussed, and as you noted, you didn't feel like you were in favor of that, but the other two members did. So the vote out of committee was to present it as the 2019 program, the way that it was originally crafted, without a modification for Grant Street. And so by voting in favor of the recommendation, it allows the process to continue so that those who intend to proceed ordinance that was drafted, that's on the agenda later, would be considered by council, but would allow the program to continue in total.
Is there still a possibility of hitting that 640, or does that, because obviously, Mark said just a minute ago, David was not a part of that, David was not a part of that, so they didn't, I mean, I'm just saying, I don't know. So. My argument is.
Well, I think maybe we're having a little bit of confusion tonight with the role.
I am sorry, this is, I'm going to go back.
No, that's fine, that's fine.
This is my third time, so I don't want to make.
No, it's fine.
I just wasn't for that.
It's fine, I understand.
I am for this program. I want a different way to fund it, obviously, you know what I mean?
Point taken, and just for clarity again, typical protocol would be that your committees be in committee, which is representative of this council, they do the research work with staff to consider the agenda items that they have. Out of committee, it comes with a recommendation to the fair council. And so in this case, it came with a recommendation to continue with the program as it was originally drafted. There was a dissenting vote, which was yours. Similarly, with the last issue, you know, if there's, if there's a recommendation from the committee, typically, council would act on the recommendation. It comes as a recommendation for the board to act a certain way. Any individual in the council has a right to ask questions or oppose the issue on itself individually, and that's why there's a roll call vote. So in this instance, it came out of committee with a recommendation to move forward, and that was the vote to accept that recommendation to move the process forward as drafted.
So if I were. I should speak up for the vote.
Yes.
Well, I would say, so we have a hand in the first reading for this, and I don't know if the timeframe is involved with this, but if there's a problem with, you know, the way ordinance is drafted, we ought to discuss it now, because then if you don't, if you wait until the second reading for adoption and then discuss this point, then it'll delay it, then for another meeting, if we amend it and damage it.
Yes, your intent to proceed ordinance would include the entire program, so when we're referencing it, we're talking about the 2019 program, inclusive of all the streets that were read into the record. To pull one of them out and do something different changes the timeframe for proceeding. You would have to draft that into a separate ordinance under a different timeframe if you want to pull back from that. In order to keep the program on our original timeline, we would have to have first reading, and again, since we meet monthly with this council, second reading would occur in May. In order to advertise, solicit contractors to do the work, give them an ability to do the work within this calendar year, this is our typical timeframe for doing it.
We could, since we have to discuss the finances for a couple businesses, it's a special session, maybe we could discuss this school, what I can hear on my, with the Grant Street. Because I do believe in the program, I just did, I, it's my fault, just a step on my part to do, and I did not know that I was, in order to keep my opinions, that everybody can hear about the two of them, two of you at that point, before the program in there, I was not on the, this is the first word, everyone's, as soon as, sets this for everybody.
For the benefit of council members that weren't at this committee meeting, should we discuss the rationale for our conclusion to not move forward with any changes to Grant? I mean, that, I thought it was a significant piece of information. We don't have hard traffic studies, but the indication is that the loop that was added to the, to the school alleviated a lot of the traffic off of Grant Street, and so we didn't consider that Grant had legitimate reason, and it could open a floodgate to Hardwagen, some others as well. So, I mean, that was the rationale for our conclusion in committee, is with that turnaround, that drop-off loop around Woodville, there really is not a marked increase in traffic on Grant Street to justify any different approach.
Sorry to argue any points with a proper study, but I like to say that I do maybe believe that Hardwagen should consider versus where split, if the traffic with different schools and downtown street, it's a small street, there's only a couple of streets that I think are affected by the city, Grant being one of them, it's a small portion of Grant, as we did the numbers in there, it's a hundred percent free, $5,000 across the city, it was 10% doesn't, $100 per house. It's significant, it's always there, it's certainly there for damage. Grant, in my mind, Grant, they may have diverted that traffic in the last few years, but for the last 10 or 15, it's not diverted, so what was, yes, of wear and tear on that street over the last 15 years that was caused by that, that's the next street you can round it, be there. I agree, maybe a one-time deal with that section of Grant Street. I just think there are different avenues to approach that instance, it's minimal, and I do agree, you got to be careful because you don't want to open up outdoors box or stuff like this, but it is obviously trampled more than your average street, because if there was no school there, how much traffic would be on the school? That's why I look at, if there's more traffic caused by this school than this public utility that we pay for, and I believe, you know, to residents, the cost of their costs on the, on the street.
Okay, so for those of you who are not in the committee meeting, is anybody concerned about or want to look at this option? Right now, we have a vote to proceed with the street resurfacing as is, that is willing to say, okay, he's brought a point or.
So then Ron, if for some reason you wanted to revisit this, this would essentially push us back a month, is that about, what sums it up?
Yes, you would have to redraft and recalculate the effective property order because you're talking about a portion of the residents on Grant Street, not a Grant Street in total. And the ordinance would have to reflect the change for the specific addresses under consideration that potentially could be amended to a 640, would require a first reading and second reading of that.
Another important part is that there's no baseline.
Right.
To go off of, even if we had a traffic study, there's no baseline to compare to. And then, the, the school did build in a, an avenue, if you will, with a turnabout to take, to divert the traffic off of Grant and onto the school. So, the, the adjustment has been made. Ken and I are, were on the committee as well, and the reason that I decided to stick with 50/50 is just simply because it's, it's, there's, there's no baseline to judge it all by. And the, the way that the traffic flows now, we can't compare that to the way the traffic was flowing before the new construction.
What's the definition of the connector street? Is it cars per day, or is it based on how it connects two streets? Look at that 640 versus that 50/50 split.
The classifications of collection or period are essentially defined in your comprehensive plan, and, and they're enumerated in there. There's, there's some additional exceptions when they're connecting pieces. And there was also provision for Mayfield Avenue, for example, specifically, because it's the only entry into Highland Park, which is a high-use facility in our community. And it, and it was a primary entrance in and out, so it was given a 640 classification, but typically, it sticks to the classifications as you define it under your transportation element of the comprehensive plan.
And they are enumerated in that plan, with some exceptions?
With, with a few exceptions.
But those, the exceptions aren't named in the plan, or they're just classified?
They're depicted by mapping, or named in the plan. And then, on occasion, the committees have extended that to streets based on their use. So, it's not a precedent if something could be out against, like Mayfield Avenue. But, you know, the consideration, not having anything to quantify it with, and, and knowing that there are other potential streets similar, I think, you know, you have to be careful about going down that road initially, without giving a baseline of, of potentially what other streets could be affected.
Could be nervous, is it something that's not?
Well, I mean, it's kind of hard, again, I, I was here for the public hearing, and I heard his argument, it was compelling at, at that point, but hearing that staff has sort of gone back and said, there's really no quantitative way to, to justify this, other than the anecdotal stuff, it kind of leads me to believe that we should proceed on, on this, on this route.
And that's my thought, too, Adam. I think you make a good point, but I think, because my thing, how I'm basing on, is because in our plan, the streets are enumerated, rather than I have some copies, and that's going to be our standard moving forward. If we want to change in the future after this, then maybe we can. But for me, it's hard to change in the middle of the process.
No, I don't.
If I don't feel it's grossly unfair, I don't feel this is grossly unfair.
I don't think it's grossly unfair, I just feel, you know, I think it should be said, or at least listened to, I do agree with the program, and I'm glad that during the meeting, you're able to talk about me, and help me, and say, Dave, to your different structures, and how this can be done, to make it more fair for everybody in the city.
Sure, yeah.
Fair share.
Yeah. No, I, I'm glad you brought it up. I, yeah, healthy.
Thank you. I'm having a very good time vibrating.
Sure.
I'll say, for me, we've talked about, I mean, we may want to revisit this, on how we can use corner lots and things.
Right.
And, I mean, you know, so, we've been doing this, this is a great, interesting year that people are favorite, right? To get a discussion with the mayor of Coven, about what a mess their sidewalks and streets since, you know, the building. And really helps your presence in cities. But in all these years, as we've done this, this is, you know, we really stick to the formula. I mean, it really.
I was so impressed. One of my, probably my second or third year as chair of the Public Works, when I first got on council, we had a, we had a citizen who just lived on the street back here, and he took all the data we had for the streets that year, and he created these huge spreadsheets, and he compared three different methods. He went and he got assessment values of every lot, and compared all three assessment methods, and did massive spreadsheets. And when he got done, he was flabbergasted, because the difference between the three methods was so minimal, that it, he, he, he wasn't saying, I want to change it, because the, the method that we were using was just as fair as the other two. You still, with a, with a city with cul-de-sacs, you end up having corner lots in high shape, and there's not a lot of way to change that. So, he was very impressed, and he did a lot of work for it, and I was grateful that he did. But yes, other methods and different things can be discussed at committee level, but at this point, given the feedback, I understand your concern, being there, sure.
And I might, when I read, when I go through all this stuff, it's not the first time somebody brought this up before, all of a sudden, I have everything in front of me, I might agree with everybody 100% on this is the best method, but I, as educators, I would like to handle this situation. People are educated, so I can make the best decisions.
Right. Okay, moving along, Finance Committee report on dispersments.
Report of dispersments, March 1st through April 11th, 2019. General Fund, $243,614.33. Power Park Fund, $1,837.06. Public Works Pay dot fund, $29,920.35. Reoccurring Debt Service Fund, $1,140.88. CBD Revitalization, $10,909.28. Waste Fees, $180,414.44. Police and Fire Pension Fund, $1,481.57. Total, $469,317.91. We, the undersigned members of the Finance Committee, recommend that warrants numbered 533635552 be approved, and the treasurer be authorized to issue checks through their payment. Mr. Peterman, Chairperson, Mr. Bezel, member, Mr. Coleman, member.
Do you want to take a motion?
Please approve.
Is there a second?
Aye.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Cameron.
Aye.
Mr. Bowman.
Aye.
Mr. Collier.
Aye.
Mr. Bezel. Mr. Peterman. Mr. Blau.
Okay, we're down to ordinances and resolutions and such. First one is the Earlton.
This is a summary of ordinance number O-3, 2019, an ordinance of the City of Fort Thomas, Kentucky, adopting the Uniform Residential Landlord and Tenant Act. The Uniform Residential Landlord and Tenant Act, known as Ultra.
I say Earlton, but I.
Earlton.
Pronounce it any way you want.
Is defined in KRS 383.715 through KRS 383.715 is adopted.
Need approval, need a motion on that.
Go to approve.
Is there a second? Roll call, please.
Mr. Cameron.
Aye.
Mr. Bowman.
Aye.
Mr. Collier.
Just before I vote, I want to, I want to thank Councilman Blau for your leadership on this. Thank you very much. Aye.
Mr. Bezel.
Second, Mark Collier, and I also.
Mr. Peterman.
Well, I'll call it, I'll call it, as your tired fan. It's old eyes.
And Mr. Blau.
I would like to say something that, I didn't discuss with Ron, so I hope this is okay, but I talked to my brother, worked very hard to put this together, try to bring the campaign together, and I go, make some pictures. We'd like to do an information session for anybody, so that I'm sort of, as a council chair, just bringing very light pictures.
Sure.
Listening, and bring up the streets, so that just, everything is actually here, it's across the board, so, I'll call later, we should be, I probably will find some continuing on those plans, and that's what it is.
Sounds good. All right, ordinance O-4, 2018. Straighten your sir.
This is a summary of ordinance number O-4, 2019, an ordinance providing for and ordering the street improvement of Fairview Place from its intersection with Sherman Avenue to its terminus, Grant Street from its intersection with Alexandria Pike to its intersection with Sheridan Avenue, North Fort Thomas Avenue from its intersection with Covert Run Pike to its intersection with Lincoln Road, Ohio Avenue from its intersection with Taylor Avenue to its terminus, Ridgeway Avenue from its intersection with Ohio Avenue to its terminus, Sheridan Avenue from its intersection with Grant Street to its terminus, Sherman Avenue from its intersection with Grant Street to its terminus, East Vernon Lane, West Vernon Lane, and South Vernon Lane, beginning with East Vernon Lane from its intersection with Highland Avenue, continuing to South Vernon Lane, and continuing to West Vernon Lane, to its ending intersection with Highland Avenue, all in the City of Fort Thomas, Campbell County, Kentucky, and all in accordance with the plans and specifications thereof, as submitted by the city engineer and is adopted by the Board of Council of the City of Fort Thomas, and further providing that the actual cost of the construction of said improvements are to be borne by the city 50%, and the property owner 50%, with the exception of North Fort Thomas Avenue, where street improvement costs for the city's typical section are to be borne by the city 60%, and the property owner 40%, and providing for the payment of an improvement assessment. The city shall proceed with the street improvements as designed for the streets listed in the title of this ordinance. Costs for the street improvement shall be shared on a 50, 50% to the city and 50% to the property owner basis, with the exception of North Fort Thomas Avenue, where the street improvements shall be shared on a 60% to the city and 40% to the property owner basis. Fairview Place, total preliminary cost, $4,192.67. Owner's share per front foot, $6.58. Grant Street, total preliminary cost, $43,911.68, and the property owner's share and city is $10.86. North Fort Thomas Avenue, $54,403.54. Total for, front foot for the owner is $7.42. Ohio Avenue, $25,044.58. Total preliminary cost per foot is $10.35. Ridgeway Avenue, $24,411.26. Total per foot, $8.96. Sheridan Avenue, $34,782.46. Total per front foot, $9.63. Sherman Avenue, $37,591.27. Total per front foot, $9.83. East Vernon, West Vernon, and South Vernon Lane, $26,463.18. Total per foot, $8.63. Upon acceptance of the work, the cost and expense of same shall be assessed and to and against the lots and the owners.
I'm sorry, I missed that. Could you repeat that, please?
No.
All right, that's a first reading, so we, moving on to ordinance O-5, 2019.
This is a summary of ordinance number O-5, 2019, an ordinance repealing, in its entirety, O-25, 2006, the examination procedure for police department promotional examinations for the ranks of lieutenant and sergeant, and adopting this ordinance, O-5, 2019, establishing the examination procedure for the police department promotional examinations for the ranks of lieutenant and sergeant in the City of Fort Thomas. The current promotion eligibility, eligibility list for lieutenant and sergeant will remain in effect until December 13th, 2019. This ordinance sets forth the procedure for police department promotional examinations, eligibility requirements for each position, test components, calculation of composite scores, and posting of scores. The mayor is the appointing authority for the city.
That's also a first reading. Now, we're down to municipal order, M-O-2, 2019.
Municipal order, M-O-2, 2019, a municipal order reappointing Dan Thaler as a member of the Planning Commission of the City of Fort Thomas, Campbell County, Kentucky, and setting his term of office.
Need a motion for that?
Aye.
Is there a second?
Aye.
Roll call, vote, please.
Mr. Cameron.
Aye.
Mr. Bowman.
Aye.
Mr. Collier.
Aye.
Mr. Bezel. Mr. Peterman. Mr. Blau.
All right, we have one executive order.
Executive Order E-3, 2019, an executive order appointing Michael Reichenbach as a police officer to the City of Fort Thomas, Campbell County, Kentucky, and fixing his compensation for fiscal year 2018 and 2019.
No actions required on that? Nothing else to come before council? We are adjourned. Thank you all very much. For those of you who didn't know me, here's my name.